Welcome, Winthrop. And welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of October 19th, 2021. This meeting is being held in the Robert De Leo Senior Center and not the Harvey Room. Because of that, there is no Zoom capability in this building. So if you'd like to be heard, please come to the Senior Center for public comment. We have forum following this meeting at 7:00. So you have plenty of time. If you want to be heard in public comment during any of the public hearings or during the forum where all questions will be answered, please come to the De Leo Senior Center. All right, I will now ask for a roll call.
Councilor DeGiro.
Here.
Council Flackhart.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Terri.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council LaCanti. Council Farino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here.
Now I have a quorum. I will call the meeting to order, and I would ask to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor DeGiro, your closest to the flag, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 5th, 2021, meeting? It was circulated?
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council DeMarco, I believe, seconded by Council Honan. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Are there any amendments? Are there any additions, any deletions? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor DeGiro.
Yes.
Council Flackhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Terri.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaCanti. Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes. Minutes are accepted. Next item we have on the agenda is general information and recommendations. Do you have any you'd like to make, Terri?
Hire a town manager? No. We do have open positions. I think the council will be addressing those. So I think that's all I have for you today.
I had received some calls about the Senior Center not being open, but the Senior Center is open and has been open for the past number of months. It's open every single day for lunch. So I mean, I've got, I think, two calls about people asking about why the Senior Center isn't open, but it is open. They're having yoga classes, they're having health classes, they have counselors coming in, and the Senior Center is open every single day, five days a week. So please come down. If you were a Senior Center visitor frequently before the pandemic, we are now, you know, open in full capacity. Join us any day you'd like. The Senior Center is open, okay? All right, moving on. We have two public hearings today. The first public hearing is that the town council will adopt new fees for the assessors' office. I will now open that public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard? Finance Committee, yes.
Finance Committee met earlier this evening along with the Rules and Ordinance Committee on both of these public hearings. The assessors' fees revolves around a municipal lien certificate. Currently, the fee is $50 for a one-to-four dwelling, four-family dwelling, and they would like to increase that to 75. There is a fee for an over-four-family in commercial, which is also 75 currently, and they want that to remain the same. We motioned to table this because we just wanted to ask a question. We wanted to just make sure that, you know, why there was a reason to increase one and not the other or reverse. So we want, we had a few more questions for the acting treasurer, and we tabled this for the next meeting.
Okay. Public hearing is still open on it. Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard during the public hearing on the assessors' office? Hearing none, we will move this where it goes to old business, and at that time, I guess, I'm motioning to be coming to table that. All right, I will close the hearing on the new fees for the assessors' office, and I will now open up a hearing to adopt the new fees for the treasurer's office. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Vice President. So the Finance Committee also did meet this evening on this issue. The fee changes they were looking for revolves around a butters notifications. Currently, it ranges from $10 to produce a list, a certified list, for up to 100 feet, and that fee would go up to $60 to produce a list for up to 500 feet. They want to change it. They looked at other cities and towns, and they feel that there should just be one flat fee of $25 regardless of the range that they would be certifying the list for. We did go over this in committee. We will be coming with a favorable recommendation in old business.
Okay. Does anyone in the public want to be heard during the public hearing? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing, and that issue will be taken up under old business. I will now open up the meeting for public comment. I know we do have people in the audience. Would anybody like to speak at public comment? Sir?
Can I just ask you to take the microphone? So...
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
This is the time to talk about any issue that you have or anything that might be coming up that the council's going to be voting on any time.
Okay. My name is Felix Gray. I live in Winthrop. The opportunity that the Northeast Voc, I know that's coming up, whether we can secure funds to help out Northeast Vocational School. It's a great opportunity. I owe every opportunity I've ever gotten in my life to it. I grew up in Malden. I met a bunch of guys from Winthrop that I started hanging out with in high school, met my wife, bringing my children up here on a wage that, you know, I was able to graduate high school and be able to purchase a house in Winthrop and bring up a family. And it's just a great opportunity that I hate to see kids not have. Not everybody's on the same academic playing field, where some people do want to go and work into construction and things like that. I know my local 537 just built a brand-new $300 million school, and we're taking in quadruple the amount of apprenticeship, apprentices. When I went through my program, we took in nine. Now we're taking in 180. So I imagine the new Northeast, being a much bigger, multi-level school, will go from taking in whatever the current number is, 40 or 50, to quadruple that and give much more children an opportunity to participate in that and benefit and be able to succeed in life is the biggest goal of, that's what the Voc does. They're trying to set children up for success, where as opposed to, you know, you could fail for a while and then build your way up. They're trying to set you up for success straight out of high school. I know a couple seniors that graduated this year, and they're looking, asking me, inquiring into the pipe fitters, inquiring into the electricians, plumbers. So children are, children from Winthrop are eager to get into these fields. They had gone and they did their thing in Winthrop, but now they're looking to get into the trades. I'd just like to say that it's a great opportunity, and I hope it's thought about. You know, it's given me everything I've ever gotten, including my family. And like I said, you graduate there, and you can go on and get a job and buy a house and live in Winthrop.
Thank you, and welcome to Winthrop. What precinct do you...
Uh, two.
Two. Welcome.
By my angle side. Thank you.
Anyone else, public comment?
So my name is Krista Shay. I also have a freshman at the Voc. So I just want to also put this out here. It's very important for these kids going forward. We don't know actually, as parents, what this all means. Like, we kind of saw it coming up. We've seen the tweets from the Voc about the new school, but we don't even know, like, if this doesn't go through, what does that mean for the future of our students? Do they continue until the new school's built, and then we don't send anybody anymore? We don't understand that part as parents, so we're also looking for feedback and communication on that end. I can say that not only are we preparing them for the future right out of, there is an awful lot of communication as far as where can they even go with college with these careers. My daughter's in all accelerated courses at the Voc. That wasn't what it was always like before. So to see AP courses at a vocational school and to give them all these opportunities, I just want to see that continue in the future.
Thank you, Krista. Krista, my grandson just graduated from the Voc, too. He's an electrician, and he's got a nice job as an electrician. But this issue, I believe, is not going to be voted on tonight. The Voc School has asked us to let them come before the council. So they're coming at our first meeting in November?
The 9th, yes. Scheduled.
So we're going to table that till after they come and have an opportunity to talk to us? Although I think that at least one of the other towns has already voted against that, so it'll probably end up on the ballot no matter what we do. Okay. All right, anyone else on public comment? Seeing none? Correspondence? Denise, do we have correspondence?
We did not receive any.
Wow, this meeting's going fast. Let's go to committee reports. First, Finance Committee, Council Terri.
I'll slow it down right now.
Yeah.
So the only, we had a joint committee meeting with Rules and Ordinance, which we'll go over in a minute. So the item that we did have, the item that we did have on the agenda was discussion on the vocational school. And just to go over what we discussed and for the people that are still here. First of all, you know, the vocational school has been incredibly helpful to Winthrop students and also to Winthrop. The vocational students built the fieldhouse at the new Miller Field, which saved us almost $400,000 in cost, and it's a great life experience for those kids. And they very much enjoyed it and did incredible work. As Council President stated, that there's 12 communities involved with the Voc. They're in the process of trying to build a high school for 300 and roughly $319 million. They've been awarded the highest MSBA grant ever of $140,000 million, so they would have to bond about $175 million, which is spread between the communities. The enrollment would increase, I think it's from 1,220 to 1,600. So there would be a higher enrollment, and Winthrop would be, I'm sure, would get a percentage of those children. Right now, we currently have 57 kids. Costs us about $900,000 a year. So with the cost of the bond and the cost of the increased students, we're looking at probably going from 900 to 1.5 million. We're really hoping that the state legislature is trying to secure funds from COVID money-type funds that would be able to go to help support building a new vocational school. So that would really be helpful. There have been some communities that have voted to support the vocational school. We believe there was one last night. We think Saugus voted not to support the funding. So it will probably go to a vote. We are recommending, the committee has come out, and it's kind of a backwards thing. So the committee has come out with a recommendation to not support the motion as written. The motion as written is asking us to not support building the school. So we're, it's kind of like a double negative there, but we're saying we support the school, but by not supporting the motion as written. Eventually, that will probably go to a vote. From the 12 municipalities will vote. And it's a totality of the votes. So it's not if seven towns vote yes, six towns vote no, it's a yes. It's the totality. So if there's 20,000 people that vote within the 12 communities, if 10,001 say yes, it's a yes for everyone. We do hope that that building does go forward. The bond payment, the first bond payment, when and if it's done, will probably be around the year 2026, fiscal year 2026. And if it is passed and is approved, we will have to look into different ways to fund that. Do we try to do a debt exclusion? Do we try to just suck it into the current budget? Do we look at possible other funding sources that are going to be paid for by then to use some of that money? So I think it's discussions that we're going to have to have, and hopefully, we will be voting on this and showing our support for the vocational school. And that was all we had in finance this year.
Okay. Who's joining the joint Finance Committee meeting? Rules and Ordinance, Council?
Yeah, we did have, with Pete and myself, I did chair that, and we had two items on the agenda. One was the, as we just stated in the public hearing, one was on the treasurer's fees, which we are asking for more information, and we tabled that. The other is on the assessors' fees, which was a unanimous positive recommendation to just go to a constant fee or a steady fee of $25 instead of ranging from $10 to $60. So that did come back with unanimous positive recommendation. And that was it.
Okay. Did we also have a meeting of the Economic Development Committee? Council Honan?
We did. We met last week, last Tuesday. The Economic Development Committee met. We invited Chamber Executive Director Betsy Shane, as well as the Planner Rachel Kelly, and we met to brainstorm ideas about post-COVID economic development and how the council might be helpful in that regard. Ms. Shane was full of a lot of great ideas and encouragement and recommendations. She recommended that we take a 30,000-foot approach. We wanted to know what the business community's hurdles were and how we could help with those, how the council can potentially drive economic development or help to drive economic development. Planner Rachel Kelly said that there are state resources. There's something called One Stop for Growth that offers a variety of projects that can be funded that we should look into, which I plan on looking into. And we had a very constructive meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the Town Manager's report.
Just very briefly, we've asked, one of the counselors has asked me to contact the Winthrop Foundation for some funding for Christmas lights. And so we've had contact with them, the meeting tonight, hopefully to vote on that or come back to us with some suggestions on cost sharing. As I mentioned earlier, the council has some open positions that they have the authority to fill. The person who is acting in that position, I think, has done a fabulous job, and that's my input on that position. If I was the hiring authority, I would certainly keep that person in that position. And I'm not. I think Mr. Terri has clarified all the vote questions. Thank you for doing that. And just, I would ask the council to refer to the Rules and Ordinance Committee, a review on signage and posting of signs. It seems to be that our current ordinance is not in compliance with the U.S. Constitution as decided by the First Circuit and the First Circuit Court of Appeals. I would like them to work with KMP Law and updating that ordinance. As well as the vicious dog ordinance is not also up to par or up to speed with the current law, so we should also review that ordinance as well. Two issues that have come up.
Good, we got that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it?
That's it. More at 7:00. I should say, more at 7:00.
It's my understanding, though, that we have decided on a company to come in and help us with the RFP and the sale of the new middle school building? Do you want to...
Yeah, I was going to save that for 7:00, but if you want to do that now, certainly you're holding it in your hands. Almay and McCall is a company that we picked. I had three reviewers on that RFP, myself being one, the town planner being the other, and the DPW director being the third. We independently reviewed the two proposals that were submitted. We picked this particular company because of their work in communities like Andover, which we found more in line with the town of Winthrop than the other companies' work. Was more in Brockton, exclusively in Brockton, which is a major city that we didn't find ourselves to align with. So their references, recommendations, and the overall presentation of their proposal was certainly more appeasing and more in line to what Winthrop, I believe, Winthrop is looking for our needs. So the next step at the next council meeting, we just got those yesterday from the procurement officer, will be coming forward with a request, a motion for funding. So once we have motion for funding, we will go ahead and sign the agreements and get the RFP Committee up and running. But again, I think the first meeting is the most important meeting. We'll be with the council and to decide what are we trying to do with this property. Before we can write an RFP, is it going to be housing? Is it going to be split housing and commercial? Are we just going to say whatever the zoning allows? We just, we really got to give direction to the RFP Committee and to the company so then we can go off and do our work and bring it back as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the town manager and the council?
Council DeMarco. Very quickly, we didn't have a tree lighting ceremony last year, and I don't think we're probably going to be able to have a tree lighting ceremony in the center this year. I could be wrong on that. But I would like to ask you to look at the Crest Ave area as a possible alternative. So maybe we could have a tree lighting ceremony. There's plenty of parking. As we've seen from the construction, we can divert people around that area. But I think it'd be nice to have something for the kids.
We'll take it into consideration again. I know Winthrop Foundation, we're working with them for funding on lighting, lights in general, but they were the ones responsible for the Highland Ave last year, as pointed out. Bringing 200 to 300 people in the Highlands is much different than bringing 200 to 300 people in French Square. But certainly, myself, the DPW director, and the fire chief, as well as the deputy chief, will look at it and see what the possibilities are.
We did have a tree lighting at Crest Ave last year, but there were only about 50 people that were able to come in and be around the tree when it was, the area was lit up last year, thanks to the Winthrop Foundation.
In the chamber. Last year was a partnership with Winthrop Foundation in the chamber.
Yes. All right, moving on. No other questions? Moving on to the school committee report. The school committee hasn't met since our last meeting, when I gave that report on the last two meetings. But we do have the superintendent in the room. Would you like?
He loves to get his...
I'd love to get you, just to give us an update of what happened this past week, if everything is okay.
So lots has happened since our last meeting. I'll be reporting out Monday night on the details of that. Just to talk for a second about COVID. We continue to have a solid track record of no in-school COVID spreading. That's a testament, of course, I've said it probably 450 times, to the mitigation strategies that we have within the school in terms of our cleaning protocols and our staffing, our nursing staffing, the distancing. We're still, there's no requirement for distancing. We still try to achieve as much distancing between our students as we can. Our students are extraordinary mask wearers and non-complaining about it. We oftentimes forget masks, but we have several of them at the schools that we can distribute to our students. We have had cases of COVID within the schools, both students and staff. However, the contact tracing has been remarkable in that there has been no further in-school spread. We are a test-and-stay school district right now. We strongly believe, after consultation with the Board of Health, Meredith Hurley, as well as the Department of Education, that this mitigation strategy that we are using is successful. We binax test our students, and we allow students who are close contacts to a positive student to binax test, that's the nasal swab, every day for seven school days. That includes athletics. We do some binax testing on Friday nights or Saturday mornings for our weekend athletes and extracurricular activities to make sure our students are staying healthy. Folks have asked about pool testing and why we're not doing that. At this point, after again consultation with Department, with Meredith Hurley, with our own school nurse, with the Department of Education, and with the folks that manage our binax testing, they believe that binax testing in and of itself and our mitigation strategies within the schools, the quick contact tracing that we do, is enabling us to stay solid with no in-school spreading at all since COVID hit. And if there were to be any cases of in-school spread or an uptick in the community, a solid uptick in the community of COVID cases, we always reserve the option to do that pool testing through the state. The state is on the struggle bus a little bit with providing staff for the pool testing. They also provide staff for the binax testing. We have chosen to use our own staff for lots of reasons. First and foremost, especially with our little ones, a familiar face like the school nurse or the CNAs that we've hired through COVID funding. Those folks are familiar to our kids, and it's less anxiety-provoking. And we also know our kids, just about every one of them, by name and typically know the parents as well, so the students do feel comfortable with it. So that's pretty much an update. We're starting to work on, believe it or not, budget planning, putting our budget teams together, starting to talk deeply about where we're headed next year and looking at all of the funding sources that we have, including the multiple grants that we have, some of which are entitlement grants, some of which are COVID funding grants, and how that's all going to factor in to keeping up over the next school year. So that's about it for now, but I'll have more Monday night for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to old business. The first item in old business is the vote on the Northeast Vocational School. And I'm going to entertain a motion to table, but I just received the text from our representative Jeff Turco, who said he wanted me to mention that he's in full support of the vocational school and that he and his colleagues in the House have been working on a bill, and they're trying to get the federal government to come in with $100 million to alleviate some of that expense that would go on to the cities and towns. And hopefully, they're successful. But we'll see what happens in the future after they come and talk to us next meeting. And so I would entertain a motion to table that issue.
Motion.
Motion's been made by Council Farino, seconded by Council Flackhart. All those in favor of table and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, the next item is the adoption of fees for the treasurer's office, and I believe you are also making a motion to table that?
No, we are making a motion to table the meeting from the, yes, I'm sorry, from the treasurer's office.
From the treasurer's office, that's what I...
Yes.
Okay. All right, so a motion's been made by the Finance Committee. It doesn't need a second to table the fees on the treasurer's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's voted so ordered. That's tabled till the next meeting. Now, there's an issue, the town council to adopt the new fees for the assessors' office, and I believe we do have a recommendation and a motion to be read on that, Councilor.
We do. We move that the town council adopt the new fee schedule for the assessing department, represented in the attached memo or take any other action relative thereto.
All right, a motion's been made, and being from the Finance Committee, it does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councils, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye when your name is called, since this is a vote.
Council DeGiro.
Yes.
Council Flackhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Terri.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaCanti. Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is new business, and we have numerous motions, and they're financial motions. Would you like to bring them forward, Finance Committee? Because they will be sent to the Finance Committee.
Sure. There's a council appropriate $750,000 for the MWRA lead line replacement costs, contract nine. These first two motions, we could take simultaneously. The council appropriate $250,000 for Phase III SSE SAW, Infrastructure Assessment Study. I would recommend that those two get sent to Finance.
I will send both the motion to appropriate $750,000 for the MWRA and the motion to appropriate $250,000 for the Phase III SSE SAW program to the Finance Committee for a report back at the next meeting.
There's also three other motions that don't necessarily have a dollar amount, but they are finance-related. One is to establish an OPEB Board of Trustees, which I believe we discussed at a prior meeting. The other is to adopt the new fee schedule for the DPW and also to accept a grant awarded by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation. And I would suggest that all those, that those three also go to Finance.
Mr. President, if I could just withdraw the OPEB trust at this time. There's more to that motion that needs to be added to it. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I see that. We're going to at least hold that till the next meeting before we send it to any committee. But I would send out the town council adopt new fees for the Department of DPW to Joint Committee of Rules and Ordinance and Finance, and I am ordering that to happen. And I will ask that the town council authorize to accept the grant award by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation that be sent to Finance. The town council vote to transfer $36,700 from capital stabilization to the General Fund for WPD Firing Range Air Unit Replacement, I would also send to the Finance Committee. Okay?
It's not on...
Okay, let's push.
Yeah, that's fine.[1771.42]
All right, now, I have appointments, and I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice president. And the first appointment I'm going to make is, it's coming up real soon, is that we need a member of the Board of Registrar of Voters, as we had a resignation, and I am going to appoint Paul Redden to the Board of Voter Registration.
Okay. Paul Redden's name has been placed into nomination. Is there any discussion on the nomination? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flackatt?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel LaTerry?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncorry?
Yes.
Okay, there's an opening, I believe it's due to the resignation of Joe Farina on the Conservation Committee. So, I'm going to appoint Tracy Machinsky to that position. She's a graduate of Simmons University. She's familiar with the Conservation Committee. Her father was on that committee. So, this will be the first father-daughter team on any committee in the town, but I think she would do a good job, and I'm happy to appoint her to that committee.
Okay, that name has been placed into nomination. Is there any discussion on the nomination? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flackatt?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel LaTerry?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncorry?
Yes.
And the final appointment I'd like to make tonight is to the new town clerk. And the situation we have is that Carla's resignation has been finished. I signed off on that two days ago. She has officially resigned. We have an acting town clerk, and we can appoint her as a council, whereas the town manager can't appoint any actual acting people or only interim. We can appoint a full-time town clerk, because that's an employee directly of the council. So, I would like to nominate the name of Denise Quest for a full-time town clerk to the town of Winthrop.
Okay, Denise Quest's name has been placed into nomination for our town clerk. Is there any debate on the motion?
Counsel, do I have to vote for her?
Yes, Counsel LaTerry.
Yes, I am in full support of this. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank town clerk Carla Vitale for her years of service. We wish her nothing but the best in her future endeavors. Sorry, very sorry to see her go. She was extremely helpful and a huge asset to this town for many years, and we thank her for her service.
Absolutely.
Counsel DeMarco.
Same, same. Carla's been incredible. I like it.
Okay, any other discussion on the nomination? Okay, seeing none, I will ask Denise to call the roll.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Flackatt?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel LaTerry?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti?
Yes.
Counsel Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncorry?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now.
Big shoes to fill. You got big shoes to fill.
To Carla Vitale, and we will be doing something to honor Carla. She's outstanding, and, you know, she's had some problems, but she's doing okay, and glad that she is doing okay. And I'm sure we will be able to do something for her in the near future. Okay, moving on, we're back to public comment. Anybody in the audience? There are quite a few people in the audience. Well, not quite a few, but there are some. Does anyone have any public comment? Seeing none?
One.
Nope.
I'll say so.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Rob O'Dwyer, and I'm the representative for Winthrop for Northeast Vocational School. So, I came tonight because I saw that it was on the topic. I'm glad to be here representing Winthrop, and I'll be back at the next meeting. And also, great to see the parents that are here in support of the building, and I hope that we, as a community, and you, as a town council, will support the new building.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you for the job you do for us there as well, on that school committee. Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none? I will close public comment and open up for public relations. And there will be a local election here on November 2nd of this year. The over-the-counter voting is now open. The ballots came in three or four days ago, so I believe that anybody can go in and vote anytime Town Hall is open. It's open 9:00 to 5:00?
8:00 to 4:30.
8:00 to 4:30.
And Tuesday, Thursday till 7:00 p.m.
All right, so, in-person voting at Town Hall is open. So, if you're not going to be here on November 2nd, or think that you might be going away or have something that might be happening, go in and vote now and get it over with. And I think we got about 180 absentee ballots are out, so if you need an absentee ballot as well, go into Town Hall. You could vote right there, but if you need an absentee ballot, send in, and we'll get an absentee ballot to you. You still have some time for that. Okay? I think that is all that I have for public comment, for public relations. There are other public relations that are being run, not by the town, but by different groups and organizations. I believe there is a Halloween party on the 29th behind the ATC Coming School, where people are invited to come and bring their cars and have trunk parties and give out candy rather than having people come to the house. They're anticipating having kids like we used to have in the center, where we'd have 1,000 people in the center and all the businesses had their tables.
You're a little aggressive with that. So, that ran by the PTA, PTO, and that's not open to the general public. So, they have to preregister to be in COVID compliance. They're going to space the cars out, so please go on to the school department sites and get the information for that.
Yeah, I was told that.
Elementary schools.
I was told that we were going to, by email today, that they're anticipating 500 children.
Well, if that's, if they have a good elementary school, both schools would bring that, but it's not open to the general public yet.
Not.
Please preregister.
Trunk or tree, right?
Yes, trunk or tree.
And I think there is also a bicycle party on the 30th at Ingleside Park. So, decorate your bicycles and get down there for that party, and there will also be candy and festivities going on at that time. Okay, does anybody else have any public relations?
Just one. I'll come to the microphone. We also have Friday night. We have a football game. It's senior night for our football players, senior night for our cheerleaders, and we also have the dedication of the Frankie Fabiano Way, which is the, sort of, the parking lot slash street behind the middle high school complex. That particular walkway encapsulates pretty much everything Frankie. It gets you directly into locker rooms, gets you into the gym if you come down that road. You can't really get in the door without a fob. However, Assistant Athletic Director Frankie Fabiano now has a fob, so he can himself get in. It also connects you to the baseball field and lets you walk across the street to the football field. So, Friday night during halftime, we will be unveiling those street signs to honor Frankie as a, you know, lifelong dedicated supporter of Winthrop Athletics, and he's also a volunteer worker for our school district. He works all the games, as many as he can. He has been doing lunch duty for us over the past couple of weeks and will continue to do so. So, Frankie's family will be present. It'll be part of our senior activity, but also special for him. His mom has passed away, as you are all aware, this past week, but I am fairly confident that Dolores Fabiano will be watching from above and saying, "Go Frankie and stop bothering the superintendent." Frankie never bothers me. I talk to Frankie every Sunday night at 7:00 o'clock and have for many years. It is the most refreshing telephone call I get every Sunday, because when Frankie calls me and says, "I'm calling you because I want to know how you are," he actually does, and he waits for me to tell him. And then, he says, "Thank you for telling me. I'm glad you're okay." So, we look forward to that celebration for our seniors as well as for Frankie. So, come to our football game. It'll be a great night. I promised the community through some emails today, we will try to take the sound down a notch. I cannot promise that for this Friday night, but we'll try. I think there'll be a lot of hooting and hollering during halftime, so please come and enjoy watching our athletes and our cheerleaders, as well as honoring Frankie and our seniors.
Frankie is a true success story, and it's going to be an honor to have that named after him this Friday night. Thank you, Lisa. All right. Any other public relations agent? Wendy, microphone, please.
WCAT can hear you if you don't take the mic. They want to hear you, Wendy.
On November 6th, which is a Saturday, we are having the Great Pumpkin Drop and Roll. It's a way for mothers out front, for the Winthrop Zero Waste Committee, for the DPW, for clean water action. There's a whole bunch of groups getting together to put this event on, and Black Earth will be there. So, we want everyone to save their pumpkins after Halloween, and then, we're going to see how many kids can roll them down what we're calling Overlook Hill, where we all used to go sledding. We're going to try and roll them into buckets. And then, they'll be collected, and other kids who are a little older, if they choose to participate, can shoot them into the basket that Black Earth has attached to their compost truck. So, that, we're going to take a lot of weight of pumpkins out of the trash, and make a fun way to do it. We're doing apple cider. We're having all-natural crafts. They're going to make bird feeders and stuff. We're asking them to bring their own cups for the cider, and if the rain date is the next day, Sunday, from 1:00 to 3:00. So, it's a combination of our Zero Waste Committee, Mothers Out Front, Black Earth, and our own DPW crew. So, I want to make sure that folk can come and do that and get on board with a little bit more composting.
Thank you, Wendy. And hopefully, you got a good crew to clean up the smashed pumpkins. Okay, all right. Anybody else have any other things they want to address?
Let's go Red Sox. Let's go Red Sox.
An hour, so, this meeting, I will entertain a motion to recess for 15 minutes, and then, we can go into the public forum, and we'll close the meeting after the forum.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to recess has been made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of recessing till 7:00 p.m. for the forum, signify by